Calling the January 9, 2019 meeting of the Plan, regular meeting of the Planning Commission to Order, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Donenfeld.
President.
Hirschbein.
President.
Hudson.
Present.
Maruzzi.
Here.
Woods.
Here.
Vice Chair Callardine.
Present.
And Chair Wermick.
Present.
Seven members present, we have a quorum.
Can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, January 3. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
Okay, an acceptance of the agenda is, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes, public comment, this time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and Agenda items, and items of general interest within the subject manager jurisdiction of this commission. Please note that the Planning Commission cannot take action on any item that was not posted, and posted and agendized. Each speaker will have three minutes. And I believe that every, every item on today's agenda, except for the consent calendar, is a public hearing item, so you'll have an opportunity to speak on these items either now in public comment, or when we get to the item on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who'd like to address the commission? There being no members of the public that wish to address the commission, public comment is closed, and the next item on the agenda is our consent calendar, there is only one item in the consent calendar, the approval of the minutes, or two items, of November 7, 2018, and November 14, 2018.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I need to abstain on the minutes of November 14, as I was otherwise occupied.
And Madam Chair, I will abstain from both set of minutes, since I was not here.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, I think we have to vote on this if we can, manually. Public hearing items. 2A, Las Palmas Brewing LLC on behalf of Larry and Connie Bran, Bramworth, for a conditional use permit to allow for a cocktail beer lounge and accessory brewery at 461 North Palm Canyon Drive Zone CBD, Section 16. Staff report, please.
Chair Wermick, Vice Chair Callardine, and Planning Commissioners, at your December 12 meeting, 2018, you considered this item and continued it with direction to, for, to the applicant and to staff to do certain things. The item was to continue to today's hearing. So the applicant was to consider making improvements to the exterior, per some recommendations of Commissioner Hirschbein and other commissioners, when the item was considered, and the applicant is also to provide additional information on the outdoor speakers. Staff was to investigate addressing some of the conditions related to gas and odor and outdoor music, as well as report back on the findings of the trash handling for the property. So the applicant has revised the plans that you have as a part of your packet, and also here on the screen, you see that they have indicated to provide some improvements to the storefront elevation, paint the rear of the building, and re-stucco the front, and relocate the drainage on the facade of the building. So this, what you see here on the screen is a rendering of what they proposed the storefront to look like, they would install a planter and some enhanced detailing for the patio railing. So that is from what is currently the condition that you see here on the screen as well. For the rear, they would repair and replace the exterior wiring, and paint over the facade to match the front of the building, and so those are really the changes that are proposed by the applicant as a part of this application. Staff, in response to the commission's request, modified planning condition number PLN 2, and added some additional language to ensure that the applicant amicably addresses complaints when notified by the city within a 24-hour period. Also, modified planning condition PLN 5, with respect to the entertainment and amplified noise, noting that the proposed outdoor speakers shall be used for providing background ambiance music for the patrons, and shall not be to a decibel limit that would exceed, or would require patrons to raise their voice beyond a normal conversation. So that has been changed in PLN 5. We also added PLN 9 to the draft resolution, and that is related to the storefront improvements that are provided to you today. So, oh, and sorry, lastly, the information on trash handling for the property, there currently are trash receptacles at the rear of the patio, or the rear of the business, in the rear patio space, and those serve as temporary receptacles until the applicant transports those to the trash bins that are located in the public parking lot to the southwest of the site. Those trash bins have been there since that parking lot was constructed in 1985, and the property pays a prorated share for trash handling from those bins. So, a couple of other items that the commission may want to consider after the packet went out were conditions that staff spoke with one of the commissioners about, one being that a subwoofer speaker shall be prohibited from the exterior of the building, or should be prohibited from, on the outside of the building, and secondly, that outdoor speakers be turned off by 10:00 PM. So those are a couple of items that you may wish to consider today.
Could you just repeat the first one?
Sure. Subwoofer speakers shall be prohibited outside of the building.
Okay. Questions of staff, starting with Commissioner Woods?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes, David, I'm looking at the existing photos for the west elevation, which is the rear courtyard space. I'm seeing both some, it looks like air conditioning equipment, and the two roll-around trash receptacles, and yet, when I look at the site plan, sort of plan, neither of those elements is shown. Do you know if there's any plans for, there's a comment made that, on the drawing actually, the elevation, that electrical devices will be removed, and yet, that seems, it looks like the main meter box for the building is on the rear facade there, as those air conditioning units that I mentioned. Do you have any information about that, or?
No, I don't have any further details. The applicant hopefully can address that when they have their opportunity to speak.
Thank you, thanks.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Is staff aware of any city-funded facade improvement funds available to landlords on Palm Canyon?
Yes, yeah, there is a facade improvement program that is currently offered, I believe it's still off, being offered, to improve storefronts, it's a match program, so any money that is put in would have to be, the city would match half of it.
And has the applicant, to your knowledge, have they talked to you about that, or have they understand that?
I've indicated to them that that is a program that might be available to them, however, that was prior to them moving forward with these improvements. So, I'm sure they may have some more questions for us about it, and I'm happy to give that information to them.
Is there a maximum dollar figure on that program, do you know?
I'm not certain on the maximum.
Commissioner Donenfeld?
Questions?
Commissioner Callardine?
Yes, could you explain what's going on with the front glazing that I guess is not being replaced, or?
So, in discussions with the applicant, they've mentioned that they intend to retain the existing glazing and frame, window frames that are there, but do in fact plan to clean up the windows and refinish, so that it looks to, it looks like a newer appearance window.
Okay.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. We actually don't have authority, do we, to require that the glazing be changed?
No.
And the other improvements the applicant has offered to do?
Yes.
And they're in agreement with?
Yes. If we're not allowed to require a change to the glazing, two questions, how was it that we were able to make it a condition of approval prior to this, and how is it that we're able to require any improvements to the facade?
We are not requiring that they do this, we're adding it as a condition per their requests to make these modifications, so.
I don't understand that.
So because, we didn't ask that they do these, the commission requested that the applicant look at and consider making these changes, and based on the discussions that they heard from the commission, they decided to move forward with those changes. So because they are proposing these changes, we are requiring it as a condition. It's not a requirement that staff is imposing on them, but essentially their willingness to do the changes.
It's not a requirement staff is proposing, it was a requirement commission was requiring.
Correct.
So, 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 so commission was requiring the changes to the facade? No, I don't think it was a suggestion. Was it?
Perhaps we can let Flynn, or the city attorney?
I'm not understanding, I specifically asked the question before we started the discussion, at the last time we were reviewing this, whether the approvals that they were seeking, if we could condition them on certain improvements to the front facade, and the answer came back unequivocally, yes. So I don't understand what changed between then and now.
I don't recall you asking that question at the prior meeting.
I did.
Because your consideration of a conditional use permit is limited to those items that are specifically being requested as part of the conditional use permit. In this case, it's for the proposed use. We do not have a minor architectural application before us, or a major architectural application before us, and so consequently, it's generally restricted to those items that are being requested by the applicant. As Mr. Newell has indicated, the applicant has heard your request at the last meeting, and offered to make improvements to the building, which we think will be a benefit to the community, and so therefore, we have included those as conditions of approval, and so that is.
Do you have the resolution that we passed last time? Do I have a copy of that?
No, you don't have a resolution from last time, because you did not pass one. You continued this case to this meeting today.
So there was no action taken last time?
No, you didn't take any action.
And a conditional use permit for alcoholic beverage consumption, would that include the exterior patio as well?
The railing would be included.
Right, so we have no control over the design or placement of that railing, as part of the conditional use permit application?
Well, in your review of the plan, that shows the location where alcohol is consumed, you can have control over the size of it, yes.
The size of the patio?
Yes.
Okay, and, and the design of the railing, is that part of the conditional use permit approval?
It's part of the request before you, yes.
And, but, but nothing to do with the facade, yeah, I'm really, this one's tricking me out, because I, I know last time, it wasn't just, we would like you to do this, it was, we're giving, this is what we want, we're giving you a chance to come back with it.
Well, ultimately, the applicant is the one who defines their project, and if the commission rejects their proposal, they would have to appeal that to the council, and the council would consider whether or not those improvements would be necessary to allow the proposed use.
So council could impose those conditions, but we can't?
Well, based on the applicant's response, you don't have to. Well, based on the applicant's response, you don't have to. They're proposing to improve the storefront.
Okay, thanks.
There being no more questions of staff, I'm going to open the public hearing. The applicant has 10 minutes.
As we discussed in our meeting last month, we are proposing a small beer manufacturer and beer garden, 461 North Palm Canyon. Basically, we have taken the suggestions or the feedback from the commission and done our best to, we appreciate the feedback and done our best to address said feedback. And we did write a letter to the commission, which we feel did address line by line the said feedback. So I'm not sure if it would be a good idea to go line by line or if it would be better to answer any questions you all may have.
This is still, this is a public hearing, so if you don't have more of a presentation, you can come back. We will have some questions for you, and you can come back at the end of it to answer questions.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? There being no members of the public who wish to speak, if the applicant would come back up? I told you it would be, I should have warned you it would be quick. So if you would come back up, and I'm assuming you don't have a rebuttal to the lack of testimony. So questions that we may have of you, starting with Commissioner Callardine? Commissioner Donenfeld?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Hirschman?
Thanks for making these changes. The project looks, you know, not 100 but 1,000% better. I think you'll benefit from it, the public will benefit from it, your customers will benefit from it, so thank you so much. I do have a couple of questions, though. On item number two on your letter, you state, "We will conceal roof drains within trim." Could you be more specific on that, please?
Absolutely. So it will be a decorative trim of, of waterproof metal similar to what is, constructs a roof drain. And this trim will be also attached to the facade of the building in the same way a drain would be attached. But the obvious goal of this trim is to enhance the appearance of the facade as well as to, as requested, conceal the, the roof drains with the proper slope.
Did you point that out on the rendering up there when he flips to it?
Yes.
Just go up there and point it out to it. No, just walk up there, yeah.
And Flynn will give you a microphone.
So this would be the reference decorative trim, which would be raised from the facade and would conceal the roof drains within.
Okay. And, and so, okay, so that's nice. That's probably an aluminum cover that's going to be on it.
Exactly.
Okay, nice. And then while you're up there, I'll ask my next, my last question, which would be, you stayed on the storefront glazing, you're going to restore it? Could you be more specific about that also, please?
Yes, so we plan on basically restoring the trim of the glazing, we'll be replacing this top window here. You know, we have, we'll basically be bringing the current, the current glazing back to its, there is no cracks or problems with the actual windows.
Glass itself, right.
The glass itself. And so we will be restoring the trim, which is, I think, what you would have considered.
Yeah, no, I just want to get a little more specific on that. How do you restore the trim? What do you, what do you plan on doing?
Well, you replace the, the trim. So it's currently, there's aluminum, and we will be replacing these trim pieces for, for the glass.
So all the aluminum you're looking at will be new, is that right?
Yes, so new, new trim on all of it.
Okay. And the door as well, because the door was in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, so if, like I said, I think we will be replacing, speaking with our contractor, the window above the door. And, and then, once we kind of restore the, the glazing, we'll make sure the door is in reasonable shape. So that's the current plan.
So you're going to try to reuse the door?
Ideally, we will, but if it's not in decent shape, we would be willing to replace it.
So just to summarize, you're going to, I'll use a phrase, reskin all the existing glazing channels? So we won't see the old glazing channels anymore, we'll just see the new stuff, but you're going to leave them in place?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, could you respond to the, the questions I had about the rear courtyard in terms of the, where the trash, the roll-around trash bins are going to go and all the stuff that's on the rear wall now?
Sure. So as you mentioned, the electrical paneling is in the rear, and that will remain, excuse me. And the air conditioning units were just recently installed by the, the owners of the building. And the, we do plan on doing some sort of enclosure to aesthetically cover the, any trash bins or the, as well as the air conditioning units.
Commissioner Root C., Commissioner Woods? So just two questions. Outdoor music, curtailing it at 10, since it's a residential neighborhood, you're okay with that?
Absolutely.
And no subwoofers, so there wouldn't be bass? Okay. Let's try with a motion to approve the staff report with the addition, let me just state what I've heard so far, with the addition of replacing the existing glazing channels? Give me the right language.
Yeah, they're not replacing them, they specifically said they're not replacing them. They're going to, and I'll just use the word, reskin them.
Skin them.
Resurface them.
Resurface the existing glazing channels, and with outdoor music to end at 10 o'clock, there being no subwoofers. I think those were the, and some, some covering of the trash bins and air conditioning in the rear yard. Those, and you're okay with those conditions?
Yes.
You want to make that motion? Okay, it's credited. All, any comments on the motion? Sure.
I was out there again this week, and again, I love what you're doing. I think it's going to be a great addition to the city and that part of the little block area. It's going to be a terrific success with the hotel opening up across the street. It's just a huge win. What about sun control? Are you guys going to put, use umbrellas? Because that little patio looks like it might get kind of toasty at certain parts of the day.
Yeah, so we'll be opening at, at noon or later.
If you could please turn your phone off, whose ever phone is ringing.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, so in the, we'll be opening at noon or later, so most likely...
Oh, it's going to be in shade by then?
Yeah, it'll be shaded from, during open hours, essentially.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Madam Chair, I would just like to thank the applicant for listening to the comments, responding to the comments line by line, and working to make a better product. I hope it helps you financially as well as helps the city. So I just want to acknowledge your cooperation on this, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
But really looking forward to seeing it, and I like to drink wine sometimes, so.
Okay, the matter is before the commission. If you could call the vote? This passes unanimously. Congratulations. Invite us to your opening, please.
Thank you so much.
Including retired commissioners.
New commission. Okay. Item 2B, Austin Todd, on behalf of California Organics, for a conditional use permit to operate a 5,044 square foot cannabis cultivation facility within an existing industrial building located at 695 South Williams Road. Staff recommendation, please.
Madam Chair? Before we go to the staff report, I need to disclose that I had a conversation with...
No, this isn't, this isn't Coachella Flats.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wrong one, wrong one.
Staff report, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. As a request of staff, and after reviewing what the applicant provided to us in response to your comments and direction from the last meeting, staff made a determination that that application was not ready to come before you. And as a result, we are asking for a continuation to a date certain of January 23, 2019.
Can I have a motion to that effect, please?
I'm moved.
Just to extend, to continue 2B, it has to be done officially. We have a motion, I think. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Oh, and please vote. The item is continued until January 23, 2019. 2C, request by Coachella Flats LLC for a conditional use permit and a variance application to decommission and review 363 existing wind turbine generators and replace them with 20 new wind turbines with a maximum of height of 499, 499 feet and two 315-foot-tall meteorological towers on approximately 858 acres located west of North Indian Canyon Drive, north of Highway 111, and south of Interstate 10. Before we get to the staff report, we have two items. One is that we just received a summation of the mitigations in the environmental impact report. I think people would like a minute to take a look at that. And then Commissioner Callardine had a disclosure.
Yes, Madam Chair, in this past week, I had a discussion with one of the applicant's consultants regarding the project. Just a brief discussion of biologic...
Thank you. We're just going to take a moment to look...
Madam Chair, may I just add that the majority of those mitigation measures are the same as contained in the initial study, the MND itself, but because this one had a monitoring program, that was why we have a separate summation and a separate summary. And that was supposed to be an attachment number seven in your package, which was also emailed to Planning Commission us last night. So it's the exact same document.
The, I'm sorry, the, we have something from the FAA, which people haven't looked at. And then there's also additional materials from the project. So again, if we can have a moment to look over that material, since it just came on our desks.
Okay.
Would appreciate that. Just for staff, was there, did you also include the, the study that was done on lights?
So I'm going to have the applicant and the, our environmental consultant speak to that.
But you don't have a written study for us that's mentioned in the environmental impact report?
I do not have that with me, so.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have some, I have some questions on the mitigation program at the appropriate time.
After the staff report, do people need more time to look at this? Are you, is everybody okay? All right, staff report, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. So the item you have before you now is a request by Coachella Flats, and this request consists of a CUP application and a variance application. So let me go on the CUP first. The CUP is for the decommissioning and replacement of the existing 363 aging wind turbines at that location. They are to be decommissioned, removed, and be replaced by new 20 wind turbines at the location. So I'm going to show you these, I'm going to be going one by one on the, on the exhibits that I have on the board. But before then, I just want to give a brief background on the existing wind turbines. Those wind turbines were installed in the 80s when the, when that area of the city was still under the jurisdiction of the County of Riverside. But there is a code, there is a, a provision in our code that requires that the wind turbines be replaced after 30 years. So because of the, the aging, the age of these turbines, and the fact that some of them are no longer functional, this applicant is requesting to remove the existing 363 turbines. This exhibit that I'm about to show, we, this is, this is the, this exhibit indicates the existing turbines to be removed and the proposed ones that would be replacing the existing ones. So there, all the red dots will represent all the existing turbines at that location. So the, the, or to the east, maybe I should just come to the bottom. So all these red dots will represent all the existing turbines to be removed, and they are all in this portion of the site, including to the west of the site. And as I mentioned, the yellow dots will represent all the proposed 20 wind turbines to replace the existing ones. So in addition to the wind turbines, the applicant is also requesting to install two MET, MET towers. A MET tower is the, is a device that is used to measure the, the movement of winds in the location, so it is an accessory use to the wind turbines.
Could you point out where those will be located?
Yes. One of the wind turbines is proposed to be here. That's where these, this dot, that little square is. And if I'm not mistaken, although it's not indicated here, the second one was supposed to be somewhere to the southeast of the site. to be somewhere to the southeast of the site. So this is...this exhibit also indicates where the locations of the new turbines will be. In response to some of the questions...
Can you go back to the slide that shows where the wind...the turbines will rotate?
Yes, I'm going to get there. So, again, there is a variance application that is included in this request. As I indicated in the staff report, the city allows a maximum height of 300 feet for wind turbines and 200 feet for MET towers. However, this request is for 499-tall wind turbines and a maximum height of 315 feet for the MET towers. So these exhibits you see on the monitor shows where the maximum height is going to look like when the top blade is at 12 o'clock position. So that is what...that's where the height is determined to be, 499. And then there was a question about the width of the blades. So as you can see on that arrow going east-west of here, the maximum width of the rotor blades will be 427 feet. There are some actions that have been taken prior to today. Number one, as required by the city and as required by the Airport Land Use Commission, because of the location of the site, ALOC have reviewed the application and made a determination that it is consistent with their requirements. That was on November 8. And then on September 14, this is also because it's within the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, a JPR or Joint Process Review is required on September 14. Applications were mailed to JPR. And there is a condition of approval that staff is proposing should any requirement or additional requirement be made of the applicant to comply with whatever those conditions will be.
Can you stop there for a minute? I don't understand what you just said.
Okay.
The last whole group.
Okay.
There's another agency that needs to approve it?
Not an approval, but to review it.
To review it?
Yes. That's the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission because of the location of the site.
And they've reviewed it?
Yes.
And they have a comment?
Well, they did not provide any comment, but I'm...just for a safety purpose, staff has included a condition of approval that should there be any further recommendations from them, that the applicant will comply with those recommendations.
What is that condition? Can you give us a number?
Yes. Just give me a minute. So that will be...it is the very last page of the conditions of approval tied to the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission. So it is number one under that subtitle.
He's still going on his...
So as part of the prior commission, also, the FAA reviewed and issued a determination of no hazard to air navigation. That is the copy that's before you today. So there are 20 of those letters for each of the wind turbines. So I only gave you one. I don't think you want to go through the 20 of them because they are all the same. And then on November 15, staff did receive an email from staff of Southern California Edison that made a determination that this is within their...it does meet their guidelines, and as such, they will have no objection to the safety setbacks. The only entity that staff has now received such a determination or an agreement from will be the railways, the rail authorities. However, staff is aware that the applicants are working with the railroad authorities. In the past, what has happened is that a condition of approval is placed on such a project that, prior to construction or prior to grading, that agreement will be supplied to staff. And that is the way that has been dealt with in the past. And two projects, two very similar projects came to mind that also required such a waiver, and a condition was placed on them. Because of the time constraint that it takes to go through the process, that condition is placed on the project.
And do you have a condition similar to the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission? Do you...is it one of the conditions we have here?
I'm proposing that today. Yes. So going back to the issue of variance, as I mentioned earlier, this project does require two kinds of very, very specific setbacks. So number one is the safety setbacks. So if you go to the very first table on your staff report, all those are mentioned. Mostly, those safety setbacks are from transmission lines, from rail right-of-way. So the applicant was not able to meet four of them, and as such, a variance will be required for those. Then the second setback requirement will be the scenic setback requirement. Usually, the city requires a certain distance from highways, from the Indian Canyon, North Indian Canyon Drive, the I-10 freeway, Highway 111, and that no works should be...there is a specific requirement from the location of works to residential areas. This applicant did meet all those setback requirements, so they're not seeking for any variance in that regard. Staff was able to make all the necessary findings for both the variance request for the height, for the wind turbine and the MET itself, and for this setback waiver requirement. I also want to mention that in the last two works applications that came before the Planning Commission, we had to make very similar...they were under very similar circumstances. So the last one that came before you was for a 440-feet maximum height. And at that time, the Planning Commission had directed staff to look into making its own text amendment that would not allow higher heights. However, due to difference of different kinds of constraints, staff focus shifted a little bit, and we haven't been able to accomplish that. So...but if you look into other jurisdictions, particularly Riverside County, they haven't approved wind turbines in excess of 400 or 500 feet because that's where the new technology is going. So you have less in quantity, but with higher height, that would generate even more power than the older ones. And as I mentioned earlier on, there was an initial study that resulted to a mitigated negative declaration for this project, along with a series of technical studies. That study was undertaken by a consultant hired by the city. They were distributed for public review and comments from August 6 to August 27, 2018. And staff also made available those MNDs to the Planning Commission. But we only received four comments, and all those were responded to. Yeah, in addition to the mitigation measures that were recommended by the consultant, staff also added...made additional conditions of approval to make sure that the issues of safety are addressed adequately. There are questions that were submitted to staff prior to today. I'm going to go over that, if that's okay with the chair, so that...and there are some of those that staff will be able to respond to. The rest of them will be directed to either the applicant or to the environmental consultant. First of all, there was a question that has to do with residential use. So I thought that I had an aerial overview of the site. So that was intended to address the proximity of any residents to the site. There is none. The closest one would be the mountain gate, and it is about 2.75 miles from this site. So the code requires that there should be no habitable structure within 50 feet, I believe, of...or any habitable structure within the location of the work. So there is no residential use, even...not even the desert highland area that is further down. So it is very far away from the site. So going back to the questions...
Excuse me. Madam Chair, actually, I have a question pertaining to the residential issue.
Yes.
May I ask it at this time?
Yes.
Edward, maybe if you go back, I'm looking at the new versus existing aerial photograph, which has, you know, the red dots and the yellow dots. Let's just put it that way. Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
To the northwest of the project boundary, there is a parcel designated as the E Ethel Redneck Living Trust. And it's...I looked at aerial photographs, and it's a grouping of very small parcels. And I believe that there are, whether it's zoning allowed or not, I believe there are some single-family residences in that area. And I'd like clarification on that, that it's very small parcels. And I did, you know, sort of a Google Maps street view, and it looked like there...I found at least two structures that certainly were built as single-family residences, and it looked like they were being occupied as such at this point.
So when you say to the northwest of it? No, that would not be...they are using a residential zone in that district at all. So undoubtedly, there is no permitted residential use in that area.
I've looked at...I forget which document it is, but it actually had the lot designation. It's totally different than the other adjacent areas, which are, you know, currently windfarms or zoned as such.
Is that be within the jurisdiction of our city or maybe DHS?
I don't know. But basically, it's...if I could point it out, maybe at the screen there.
Yes.
I said, you know, whether it's now or...I don't know when, but it would be good to clarify that issue.
Okay.
And I don't know whether, to be honest, whether that's within the city limits or sphere of influence or whatever. But like I said, I believe there are people living in that quadrant there.
Okay.
I had my...it was...I also had a question on residential, but it was more a...the sightlines, and that was from the lighting study, in terms of what communities are going to be impacted seeing the red lights and whether those would be difficult for the people that live in that community. And it came kind of as a racial justice issue for desert highlands. I don't know what the impact of those lights flashing all the time, but if people are going to see them for the first time, that was the residential question. That was the second residential question, but it's the one that I was asking. Yeah.
Look at the distances to the residences in the county that are along Highway 111 there by the Valero Station.
So that would be south of 111, right?
Excuse me?
That would be south of Highway 111.
Just barely south, yes.
Yeah.
Immediately adjacent to Highway 111.
Correct. It's approximately 3.84 miles away from this site.
Okay.
Madam Chair, relative to your question, there are specific guidelines that FAA has regarding light on these equipments.
You know, I understand that. The question is, which neighborhoods does it impact? And has anybody looked at what the impact of seeing all those...seeing those lights every day in a way that you would not have seen them before? Because now they're going to be visible to a swath of residential communities that they weren't visible to before.
Further to that question, Edward, in the package I saw that we received several months ago, there were many, many more visual simulations from different vantage points. And I was wondering, is that still part of this submittal where they left off? Because I think it does pertain to Chair's question about the visibility of these towers from different areas.
Yeah. So those exhibits that I remember providing it to the Planning Commission, as those were part of the appendix, perhaps the environmental consultant who is here may be able to address those.
Were those part of the package that the public was able to view?
We had it on our website.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I'm going to defer the remainder of that question relative to the lights to our consultant and the applicant specialist that is here to address those. But going back to the rest of the questions, so the first question came from the vice chair, and the first part of it was actually comments, both the first two are comments. And then the first question there was... So these are our comments, really. So I'm going to go...the first question is, will there be an overhead wires connecting the turbines, or those will be undergrounded?
The staff reported indicated there would be some overhead.
Correct. So they will be undergrounded.
So the staff report is the one that was incorrect?
I stand corrected. And then your questions regarding the MND on page 28, where it states that lower blade rotational speed, higher rotor height, and greater distances between turbines allow more visibility to avian species and increased avoidance potential. I will also defer that to our environmental specialist.
On that, can you go back to the slide that shows how the blades go? It's a slide in blue. And just leave that up. That will be a question is to how those overlap.
And then the vice chair had asked if there are data or evidence to back up those claims. Again, I'm going to defer those to the...
Those are fairly conclusive statements.
Yeah, to the environmental consultant. You also asked if this has been reviewed by the Coachella Valley Multi-Species Habitat Plan, which that would be the same body as the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission. Yes, they have reviewed it. And you did mention here that it sounds like this is the direction that the industry is headed. Your question there is, are there other existing potentially proposed wind farms that would also seek 500-foot-tall towers in the near future? The answer to that is yes. Because if you recall, the last two prior to this one also exceeded at the maximum height of 300 feet. So we had to also seek for a variance for those.
I don't want to slide into commentary, but...
Don't. You're...don't.
So the additional questions, I believe, from the chair and from Commissioner Woods, were asked about the summary page with all the mitigation measures. So those are the ones that were provided to you today. I also want to mention to you that at least three of those mitigation measures have already been met by the applicant specifically, the mitigation measures MMIV-4, 5, and 6. They've already provided the documents that were required of them. Staff is in possession of those documents.
Edward, there was also a question that came from one of the commissioners as to how the city set its initial setbacks, and if there... how the city set its initial setbacks, and if there were any safety issues regarding the reduction in the setbacks and what that would mean.
Yeah, I was going to get there. So for that question, I had to rely on Mr. Fred Noble, who is the preeminent wind turbine guru in this community. So the first question I posed to him was, how did you come about those setback requirements? So his response was that way back in 1980, when the county was in charge, was reviewing the wind turbines installation, there were no, any particular standards. But just to avoid any major catastrophe, just in case there were to be a failure of a wind turbine, so it collapses or so, that was how they came about those setback requirements. But also, for the past 30, 40 years, there has been no instance of a failure where you have a wind turbine collapse or fall and then roll to hurt either other developments or individuals or homes. That has never happened. So, and I keep going back to the last two wind turbines project that you approved, they were under the very same similar circumstances. So you did grant variance for those two, and we have, we have no complaints or any type of failure relative to those two up until now.
Madam Chair, I have a response to Mr. Hudson's question earlier about the adjacent properties and the question if they were residential. If I could have Mr. Robertson go back to the slide that we were looking at there. So the properties here on the north side of, I believe, the railway line there are currently within the county, so they are not within the city limits. However, they are within our sphere of influence. The first properties that you see here on the north side of the tracks, property here, shows under county records as being a commercial property with a zoning of W2, which I'm assuming is either wind overlay or water course. And then going to the city's general plan map showing the sphere of influence, we designate that particular area as a wind energy overlay. And so going back to the question, is there residential there? There is a couple of residential houses within that area, that unincorporated area of the county. However, it still meets the separation requirement that's required under our zoning code. And the intent is that the future use of those properties would be within the wind overlay if they were annexed into the city of Palm Springs.
At this point, are we at questions? You're still, we're still in staff report.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So the other question was, will there be impacts to the desert highlands neighborhood? So the chair asked of that earlier. I'm going to defer that question regarding to light.
It's only regarding the lighting.
So I'm going to defer that question to our consultant. And you also asked about any proof of lower blade rotation, as stated in the MND. Yes, that was relative to the question asked by the vice chair. I'm also going to defer that to our, to our consultant. And then what are the widths of turbine blades or the rotors? Those are 427 feet diameter. And the distance from nearest housing development? So the one, other, in addition to the one that the director just mentioned, there is the Mountain Gate and Desert Highland, Mountain Gate and the future Maryland development is over a little 2.7, 2.8 miles from this site. And then I think I've already addressed the other question, where did the original setbacks standards came from? We inherited, the city inherited those standards from the county in 1980 and 1990.
Edward, do you know if the county has updated those standards?
I am not sure, but Mr. Noble is still here. I could probably ask him. Yes, yeah.
If you, if you're going to answer, please come up. And though we all know you, if you'd introduce yourself.
Well, I'm Fred Noble of Windtech Energy. I have no economic interest in this project whatsoever, directly or indirectly. Edward called and asked, how did these safety setbacks come about? And it goes back to the original county ordinance. I was there when it was drafted. Nobody had any idea what windmill would look like, what it would do, would it explode, what would happen? So setbacks were set significant distances from the adjacent properties. And that was a good idea in the very early days. There were some pretty interesting blade throws, frankly, in 1981 and '02. That's when machines had 100, 200 RPM rotations. These are rotating at about 30 RPM, I believe. There's never been a large tower goover. If it's going to go over, it's going to happen in a high wind that's coming from the west. It's never happened here. Worldwide, there have been a few blades, a few less than 10, come off these really large machines. And when they do, they fall straight down in every single case. They weigh, you know, 40, 50 tons. And you, so the safety issues are much different than the thinking back in 1980 when this started. There are two very large windmills directly across the freeway that had variances for height. One of the things you'll notice is that the land going north rises about 500 feet up toward Desert Hot Springs. When you look at the, from the city, looking at the windmills, the ones in the distance will be 700 feet above the eye, and these will be 400 and 500 feet essentially above the eye. So what happens is the tall ones get lost in the view shed because the ones that are only 100 feet high are actually 700 feet higher than your eye. So the safety setbacks, which were set at great overkill in the beginning, which was a good idea, are no longer really relevant, and you've done waivers before on them. Because if there's going to be a problem, it's going to be a blade coming off, and they always come straight down. On the lights, FAA has three levels of lights on the, that you can put on here on the tower. The project is out there now, the bright one is, they chose the brightest lights. And I think if you have a condition on this, that they use the dimmest lights that the FAA will allow, you'll discover that the brightness won't be nearly as much as before. This is completely consistent with the city's policy of cleaning up the old projects. And any environment, the project is an environmental mitigation, pure and simple, because it goes from one windmill for two and a half acres to one for 40 acres, opens the view shed. The trips for maintenance are vastly less. The old machines are 30 years old now, and they need a lot of maintenance, a lot of people going out there. The new machines don't require that. So in any sense of environmental mitigation I can think of, by doing this, you've mitigated. There may be other things you want. And then finally, the conservancy has no jurisdiction on permitting. That was carefully negotiated when the conservancy was set up. They have suggestions, but by agreement, by law, they cannot, they do not have permitting authority. You guys do. No, sir, excuse me? The Conservation Commission.
Mr. Noble, do you know if the county or any of the other counties in California have changed their regulations to match the, their setbacks and regulations to match the newer equipment?
The county went from 1.5 times the height of the windmill at the top of the arc to 1.1 times the height. And that is, I think, they've done variances down to like, you know, one times the height and even a little bit less. What you've got here is a situation where you've got parcels that are not big enough to repower these projects if you, if you don't work with the setbacks. And there's, there are no people living there, and it's not zoned for residents, except for the small group you pointed out. And so the, the questions of safety really come down, what does Edison think about its power lines? And they seem to be okay. And they've done this before. The railroad, I have no idea what the railroad will do. I've never had to deal with them, fortunately. But I'm sure they'll want a pound of flesh like they always do. So other than that, what you really have here is a project really consistent with the policy of the city, which is to get rid of the old machines and the clutter. I mean, they're 30 years old. They have the equivalent now, if they were a truck, they'd have the equivalent of two and a half million miles on them, so.
We thank you for this. It's, we're sort of getting into public testimony, which we haven't opened up yet. So I've been treating you as an expert witness to help us in our deliberations. And feel free to come back and public testimony. Really appreciate your assistance.
Well, as I say, I have no interest in this project at all.
And you are a local expert.
Well, yeah. I don't know if that's good or not.
Edward, I think.
Yeah, so Madam, Madam Chair, in conclusion, staff is recommending approval for the CUP, and also recommending that the commission grant the variance waivers for the applicant, given that this project is consistent with other similar wind turbine farms within the city, and also that there are adequate mitigation measures that are imposed on this project to assure its safety and to meet our code requirements, and that adequate findings have been made for the variance and the conditional use application. So that will conclude my report.
And you, do you have a condition in there about the lighting being the dimmest possible?
We will add that. So there are two conditions that I'm owing you. The first one will be relative to the waiver of safety requirement from the Union Pacific Railroad and the dimin of the lights.
Okay. Before, before we get there, one question for you. This is procedural. We also have a negative deck that we need to approve. So Flynn, in terms of procedure, should we hear from the environmental consultant now before we ask questions of staff, or how do you want us to handle that?
No, you can ask questions of the environmental consultant at any point in time during the hearing. But in terms of the action, when you get to a point, if you're going to take action today, we would ask that you make your findings on the environmental documentation first and then proceed with the conditional use permit of the variance.
Would we normally have the environmental consultant speak now, or do we do that?
You may have the environmental consultant speak now as part of the staff's presentation.
Do people have questions in advance of that so that, yeah, just so that the environmental consultant knows what our questions are and is able to answer them? That's a question for, for people. In terms of procedure, should we do questions now, then have the environmental consultant? Or would you prefer us to have them first? I think then we would like the environmental consultant to come up.
I am Michelle Witherspoon with MSA Consulting, representing the
If you just pull that a little closer to you.
Representing the CEQA document for the city.
Do you have a report for us?
Edward pretty much summed it up. The aesthetics analysis was prepared by DUDAC, and they determined that impacts were less than significant. I'd like to address the nearest structures, as you mentioned, are 30, 200 feet away, and the closest one is a metal scrapyard. And I believe the residential buildings are north of that, so the scrapyard is between the buildings and the wind turbines. And currently, there are eight turbines existing on the site that have lighting. As Mr. Noble mentioned, the FAA requires lighting for structures taller than 260 feet. And so there are currently eight turbines out there that have lighting on them, and they have the older style of lighting. And so it will be reduced when the 20 new turbines are, the lighting style will be reduced when the new turbines are built. The biological, I'm just going to touch on the topics that had mitigation.
There were also some specific questions
Oh, okay.
Regarding the blades, page 28. I think there were questions on page 11 regarding the lighting study. And then if you'd go through the mitigation measures.
Okay, well, please remind me of the questions regarding the lighting study.
It's just, did you, we didn't get a copy of a lighting study that was circulated?
It was my understanding it was included as part of the visual analysis that was prepared by DUDAC.
It's not been sent to us, so it might have been prepared at some point, but if there's a study referred to, I would assume we would see it.
I believe it was just in general incorporated into the overall visual analysis. I don't know if there was a separate lighting study.
It refers to a lighting study? And it indicated which neighborhoods were going to be impacted by the lights?
And that was part of the, just the general visual analysis discussion.
It's, okay.
The visual impact report included a lighting analysis. And that's where it discusses the eight existing turbines that have, that currently have lights on them, that are out there now that will be part of the demolition process. And ultimately, the conclusion was there were less than significant impacts on all of the neighborhoods, including the Aerial Tramway, the State Park, the Jesse, excuse me.
Get into the microphone for
Oh, sorry. And I can't see without my glasses, but I can't put them back on. So the James, Jesse, Desert Highland Unity Center and Mountain Gate, those were all part of the visual analysis study and which determined there would be less than significant impacts, based on the existing conditions where there are the 300, approximately 300 turbines to be replaced with 20, and there are eight already out there with lights.
Yeah. Commissioner Hudson.
Madam Chair, just a quick question. You've mentioned the eight existing turbines on the, on the site, the taller ones. Do you know roughly what the height of those eight turbines is?
I think that they were close to 300 feet. 300, no, that was the meteorological tower.
That was part of the visual simulation. I just want to sort of have a benchmark.
Yeah. The real question was, if something's blinking and you see it, it's, the lights are charming when you drive in. I always like to drive in at dusk when they go on. But if you're seeing them all the time and they're blinking, is there anything that indicates whether that's, that's bothersome to people who see it? And that's, that's the impact I'm concerned about.
I do have the, the existing turbines are 260 feet tall, the ones that have lights.
Sorry, that was 260?
260, uh huh. I'm not aware of, aside from the visual analysis that was prepared, of any federal or state data indicating that the duration or the amount of lighting is considered significant impact.
And then on page 28, there was a very specific question that came from Commissioner Callardine regarding, it was avian protection, whether there was any, it says that there's a lower blade speed. We understand that. But it says fewer turbines. Do those blades overlap? So is it actually safer for birds? Is there really a space between them? Do you know that?
Yes, because of the modeling to achieve the highest energy generation, they can't overlap. And so there, according to the document, there is a gap between the proposed turbines that
And how large a gap? It looks, when you look at the simulation on it, it looks like they overlap. So I don't know what height the birds fly at. don't know what height the birds fly at.
I do, I did remember reading that the height is at a safer height for the birds, that it is actually above the area where they normally fly. The existing ones are in their flight path.
Do we have documentation on that? That was my, one of my concerns, is there were several conclusionary statements in there. It might be kind of logical, but they didn't, we didn't have any backup data.
They're in the biological report that was prepared by LSA.
I don't, well.
I'm going to have a number of questions about avian issues. I don't know how we should address that. I don't know if you're the expert on that.
Our biologist here.
But, okay, so, we'll just address that today as well?
Yes.
Yay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Martin. I'm the Director of Environmental Permitting and Senior Ecologist for Terregen Power, responsible for our development, operation, and construction in the United States. Glad to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
We're kind of going a little out of order here.
I thought we had an independent environmental consultant.
And that was the person who was speaking to us?
That they would have an avian expert as part of that? Not, not the applicant, but the independent one?
I don't know.
I can walk you through the documents that have been prepared by them.
Well, that's okay. I don't, not right now. I'm looking for staff and our consultants--
Right.
--input at this point.
I think what we'll do is have our consultant finish, and we'll come, we'll have you come up, both in your presentation and also questions. I'm sure we have questions for you.
Wonderful, okay.
And we very much appreciate your offer.
Thank you.
So, if you can go through what else you have in terms of this and mitigation measures, and then I'll have people ask questions.
Not part of this document, but I do know that Governor Brown did a, he funded a study to determine the height of the turbines that would be the least impactful to avian species. And that's, the newest designs are based on that study. I don't know the date of it, but that is, as I sat down, I remembered.
When you say the newest designs, you're saying these designs?
Yes, the taller turbines and the slower rotary speed.
So, so you're saying that birds don't fly higher than the bottom of these blades as they turn? Is that what--
I think that is, in average, their patterns. And there is a take permit that was included--
A what permit?
--in the biological study for a take permit.
What's a take permit?
That means that if there are birds that are injured or harmed by the turbines, that the Fish and Wildlife Service will require mitigation. There's also a monitoring program for two years after the turbines--
What would be the mitigation if there's a lot of birds that are killed?
I believe if the monitoring program indicates that there are a lot of birds that are harmed, that, I don't know, Fish and Wildlife makes turbines be halted. I'm not, I do not know exactly what would happen. But that is part of the mitigation, whether it is required for two years after.
And which mitigation is that? It's V2?
Yes, I believe it is.
Commissioner Callardine.
Do we know what the existing, have any measure of the existing bird mortality rate out there would be under the existing conditions? I think it would be the CEQA baseline.
I think since so many are decommissioned, that it wouldn't be--
Is this the right time to ask questions, detailed questions of the--
Yes.
Okay. I'm not familiar with a lot of these mitigation measures. So, for example, mitigation measure 4-4, the risk man, risk assessment for migratory birds and bats, is that something that has already been prepared? And if so, is there a report that discusses that, that we have access to? Because it talks about raptors, it talks about--
Right.
--migratory patterns. I mean, all these things that I'm curious about, and I'd like to have answers to, but I don't see a report, so I'm just a little confused. Or an expert that could perhaps answer those questions.
Yes, I believe that was part of the mitigation for the biological report. Sort of a pre-construction survey.
Pardon me.
It would be conducted 30 days prior to ground disturbance, sort of similar to a burrowing owl survey.
Is there an actual report that I could read? I mean, other than just the summary and the--
I know, I believe it will be conducted prior to ground disturbance.
Because there's issues that say, "A suitable compensatory mitigation shall be proposed." So, I'm not sure what that means, this relates to, you know, raptors and migratory birds that have been killed. So, I'm wondering what would be suitable compensatory mitigation? That's one question. And then, for mitigation measure 4-5, that talks about an eagle conservation plan. I don't know what that is exactly. I'd be curious to see what that is. And I know there was a mention of an eagle take permit.
Right, that's part of the conservation plan.
But I'm not sure what that means either. I mean, how many, does it mean, a certain number of eagles can be killed at some--
I assume that it would be money applied to a program. Normally, that's what--
Question about that specifically.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Earlier on, I mentioned that some of those mitigation measures have been met. So, this, that report that Commissioner Peters is asking for was submitted to staff this morning, so I have it here.
Which one?
The risk assessment that mitigation measure IV-4 was asking for, so the applicant for broad, for broad and bat conservation strategy.
What? Yeah. You know, part of what I'm thinking is that, at some point, we need a, people, we have new commissioners, we have people that were not here when previous approvals took place.
Yeah.
And a study session for the commission, even though it's my last meeting and I won't be at it, but for new commissioners, I think would be really good. And a lot of these are important issues, I think. So, I'm just looking at it that way. I think there are questions that are not answered here that could be answered, and there's a lot of information that might help not just the commission, but maybe staff do a text amendment for our general plan and our zoning code, so that we end up with, with good plans. But I'm, I'm just wondering, as I'm hearing the questions, I'm hearing questions without, without clear answers. And I'm wondering, Flynn, if you have a thought on how we proceed with this? And it's not from not liking the concept. I think it's, it isn't--
I'm just trying to understand--
Yeah.
--these very technical issues that--
Right.
--aren't reports that I saw that were associated with them.
Yes, if I may ask, Ms. Witherspoon, would MSA be able to do a study session on the document with the planning commission?
Yes, absolutely.
And you'd be able to--
I don't have a copy of that document, so.
Okay, if, and you would be able to have experts there who could respond to the questions--
Yes.
--that they are asking now. So, based on that, if you do have concerns, what I might recommend is that we do a study session prior to our next planning commission meeting. We will have our consultant bring their experts in those areas where you have questions to respond to those questions.
And--
That might be the best way to handle this.
And possibly ask if Mr. Noble might be able to attend that with us, since he has significant experience in this field, and possibly the applicant's environmental person also attend to add additional information. Yeah.
I just suggested we submit questions early on, that we could then pass on to the consultants.
To our consultant.
At least they have some prior knowledge of what our, where our interests are.
Can we submit some questions today?
I think we, I think--
I have a lot of questions. I'd rather just submit them electronically.
Yeah.
Flynn suggested that I verbalize them, but I'd rather--
No, I was, this, can we do it today? That doesn't include submitting them verbally, because I've got--
I think we should just do it electronically.
Oh, sorry.
Well, you can go ahead. Do it.
Okay. If it's appropriate time, I would ask, where did the--
Before you get there, if we're asking to do this, what, what would you recommend as our next steps with this public hearing?
Here's what I would recommend, is that we continue with the public hearing. We have yet to hear--
That's what I thought.
--from the applicant. I would like to hear from anyone in the audience of the public who would also like to speak on this matter, so that we can take their testimony. And then, once we conclude the public hearing portion of this meeting, based on the testimony that you hear in the public hearing, you may then want to continue this to a study session prior to your next planning commission meeting--
Right.
--and continue the item accordingly.
I think that's good. I think what I'm going to do right now is take a five-minute break, since I've been asked for one by members of the commission. We'll come back and finish the public hearing on this item. And then, on page 28, there was a very specific question that came from Commissioner Callardine regarding, it was avian protection, whether there was any, it says that there's a lower blade speed.
Yes.
We understand that, but it says fewer turbines. Do those blades overlap? So, is it actually safer for birds? Is there really a space between them? Do you know that?
Yes. Because of the modeling to achieve the highest energy generation, they can't overlap. And so, there, according to the document, there is a gap between the proposed turbines--
And how large a gap? It looks, when you look at the simulation on it, it looks like they overlap. So, I don't know what height the birds fly at.
I do, I did remember reading that the height is at a safer height for the birds, that it is actually above the area where they normally fly. The existing ones are in their flight path.
Go ahead.
Do we have documentation on that? That was my, one of my concerns, is there were several conclusionary statements in there. It might be kind of logical, but they didn't, we didn't have any backup data.
They're in the biological report that was prepared by LSA.
I don't, well--
I'm going to have a number of questions about avian issues, I don't know how we should address that. I don't know if you're the expert on that.
Our biologist here.
But, okay, so, we'll just address that today as well.
Yes.
Yay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Martin. I'm the Director of Environmental Permitting and Senior Ecologist for Terregen Power, responsible for our development, operation, and construction in the United States. Glad to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
We're kind of going a little out of order here.
I thought we had an independent environmental consultant.
And that was the person who was speaking to us?
That they would have an avian expert as part of that? Not, not the applicant, but the independent one?
I don't know.
I can walk you through the documents that have been prepared by them? Well, that's okay. I don't, not right now. I'm looking for staff and our consultants--
Right.
--input at this point.
I think what we'll do is have our consultant finish, and we'll come, we'll have you come up, both in your presentation and also questions. I'm sure we have questions for you.
Wonderful, okay.
And we very much appreciate your offer.
Thank you.
So, if you can go through what else you have in terms of this and mitigation measures, and then I'll have people ask questions.
Not part of this document, but I do know that Governor Brown did a, he funded a study to determine the height of the turbines that would be the least impactful to avian species. And that's, the newest designs are based on that study. I don't know the date of it, but that is, as I sat down, I remembered.
When you say the newest designs, you're saying these designs?
Yes, the taller turbines and the slower rotary speed.
So, so you're saying that birds don't fly higher than the bottom of these blades as they turn? Is that what--
I think that is, in average, their patterns. And there is a take permit that was included in the biological study for a take permit.
What's a take permit?
That means that if there are birds that are injured or harmed by the turbines, that the Fish and Wildlife Service will require mitigation. There's also a monitoring program for two years after the turbines.
What would be the mitigation if there's a lot of birds that are killed?
I believe if the monitoring program indicates that there are a lot of birds that are harmed, that, I don't know if Fish and Wildlife makes turbines be halted. I'm not, I do not know exactly what would happen. But that is part of the mitigation, whether it is required for two years after.
And which mitigation is that? It's V2?
Yes, I believe it is.
Commissioner.
Do we know what the existing, have any measure of the existing bird mortality rate out there would be under the existing conditions? I think it would be the CEQA baseline.
Okay.
I think since so many are decommissioned, that it wouldn't be--
Is this the right time to ask questions, detailed questions of the--
Yes.
Okay. I'm not familiar with a lot of these mitigation measures. So, for example,
this map. We have been working on the development of this repowered project for over a year now. In November 2017, we submitted CUP Invariance applications to kick off the formal application process with the city. In February 2018, we met with the Planning Department and the city's secret consultant to discuss the project. And on August 6, 2018, the city published the ISMND. On November 8, 2018, the ALUC... I apologize.
And if you wouldn't just read your PowerPoint, but just talk... It's on the screen. We can read it if you just go through it.
Sure. The ISMND initial study mitigated negative declaration. On November 8, 2018, the ALUC, the Airport Land Use Commission, board heard our project and voted unanimously to approve pending receipt of FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, no-hazard determinations for the proposed turbines. Those FAA no-hazard determinations were issued on December 4, 2018, and were then provided to ALUC, the Airport Land Use Commission. Moving forward from today, we hope to begin construction in the third or fourth quarter of this year and place the project into operation late next year. We'd like to highlight one of the many positive attributes of this project, and that happens to be the reduction in visual clutter due to the decommissioning and removal of approximately 363 existing turbines. The best way to present this is through visual simulations, two of which are on the following slides. The first visual simulation is from the north of the project off of Garnett Avenue. The second visual simulation is from the southeast corner of the project. The first simulation looks south-southeast. The second simulation looks west-northwest. Sorry about that. This is where the visual simulations took place. In view number one, you can see the visual clutter from the existing turbines throughout the view. In the visual simulation, you see the reduction of the visual clutter with the new proposed repowered turbines, creating a more uniform landscape. Again, in view number two, we see the incredible amount of visual clutter with the existing turbines, which again is significantly reduced by repowering the site. I thought that this slide would help highlight and compare some of the important attributes of the existing versus the proposed repowered project. As mentioned earlier, the existing site has approximately 363 existing turbines. Most were built in the 1980s and range from 108 to 110 feet in height. Their average generating capacity is between 65 kilowatts and 108 kilowatts. The average annual net capacity factor is a meager 17 percent, which will further decline as these turbines age. In comparison, the repowered site would consist of only 20 turbines, which is about a 1 to 18 reduction. Due to the efficiencies of modern turbine technology, the annual net capacity factor is expected to more than double, to 40 percent. Unlike the existing project, the repowered project would have modern safety features, including fire suppression and automatic shutdown. Our noise analysis indicated that the existing project on the repowered site would remain under city noise standards. And last but not least, the repowered project would provide a significant boost in the property tax base for the site, providing Riverside County with approximately $16.2 million in property taxes over a 30-year period.
Total overall generation, is it about the same? I didn't do the math.
The overall generation would more than double.
Okay, thank you.
To finish up my presentation, I'd like to summarize these benefits. Removes 363 turbines and replaces with 20, utilizing an existing site and existing disturbance. Reduces visual clutter. Replaces old equipment with safer, more efficient, and state-of-the-art technology. Generates more electricity. Creates between 80 and 100 temporary jobs during construction and preserves jobs for our current operations team. Generates significant property tax revenue for Riverside County. Provides an economic benefit during construction to the general region. And supports various renewable energy initiatives. And also, a benefit that is not on this slide, is that recent studies show that repowered projects reduce avian mortality risk over existing conditions with existing turbines. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Myself and my team of experts are here to answer any questions you may have.
We'll do that later. I'm going to, at this point, open the pub... Or ask the members of the public who wish to speak to come forward. You will have three minutes.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Fred Noble again. I want to speak to the bird question, because I think you're going down the wrong trail here. The fact is, there's never been an eagle killed by a windmill in the Palm Springs area. Some years ago, there was hysteria about eagles, and legitimately so, because some do get killed up north. And one time, I offered a $10,000 reward if anybody could find evidence of an eagle killed by a windmill in the flats, and nobody could take me up on it. The reason is, they live up in the trees, up in the hills. And the botanist explained to me that if you're an eagle, and you can fly laterally and get a rabbit and take it to your nest, or come down here and lift it 4,000 feet, you're going to stay up in the hills. For whatever reason, they just don't come down here. There was one eagle, killed one time, found on Dillon Road between two wind farms. And it turned out, it hit a power line. Its shoulder was almost cut off, wing almost cut off. And that's... A power line does that. There are no above-ground power lines in wind farms. A windmill blade is like getting hit by a bus. It might crush an animal or bird, but it's not going to cut its wing off. The migratory birds tend to fly above 1,000 feet. Millions of them come through the San Gorgonio Pass, two each way, during the year. But there's been very little evidence that they've been killed in any significant numbers. And those were always by the windmills way out to the west by Cabazan. So as you consider these matters, I would very much hate to see this go down the road of that we have a giant bird problem here. It'd be bad for these guys, it'd be bad for me next time I show up with a project I want to build. That's kind of why I'm here, is to be sure that we don't get conditions that have been dealt with in the past. So the bird issue is, as you look into the history of studies that we've already done in this planning commission and by staff, you'll find that the bird issue, mercifully down here, is just not a big one. And then, I could have my geography wrong on lights, but I think citizens of Palm Springs proper have to look through the existing lights on the existing projects that will remain before they can see the lights on this one. I've got to double-check that, but I think that's right. So it may be that these lights, albeit they're a bit higher, may not even be discernible from the city. But that's something you can look at the geography and find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak? The applicant has three minutes for rebuttal, and if you don't have rebuttal, we may have questions from the commission, if you want the rebuttal time. I think there might have been questions for the gentleman who deals with your environmental issues, who was up here before. Does anyone have questions of him?
Were you going to go to a study session for this?
Yes, we are.
I don't want to bring it all up again.
Okay.
And I'm going to summarize my questions electronically, so you will know what they are in advance, and the other expert that the city is going to be using.
Okay. Commissioner Hudson.
Yeah, I have a sort of basic question. You're asking for a 499-foot height, let's just say 500. And to me, that's very high. So I was... My question is, did you look at an alternative scheme, keeping, let's just throw a number out there, a turbine height of 300 feet? And in terms, obviously, there would need to be more turbines. But was that a feasible option, or did you explore that at all?
Sure. That'd be great.
Is the microphone on? On the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
And I can answer that question, thank you. The nature of the turbine business today is, as turbines get more efficient and they get taller, all the major modern manufacturers of today have followed that path. So there really are no new, modern turbines that are under 300 feet. It's just, they've gone to the 400, 450, 490-foot range, and that's just sort of how it's gone. If we had been able to find turbines under 300 feet, then what happens is, we have more impacts, more turbines, the same-sized site, and trying to achieve the same capacities. It just... The setback needs, the impacts on the ground, all of those things go against us, go against the site. So it's really, at this point, the modern turbine world is 410 feet and higher. And I'd like to answer the FAA question as well. Typically, I imagine some of the existing turbines out there today have daytime and evening lights flashing. Our turbines, the requirements of the FAA are medium-intensity red lights, and they will only flash at night. And not every turbine will be lit. How the FAA manages the lighting program is, once the final layout for construction has been determined, the FAA will look at it, and they'll issue a lighting plan. And it's typical that they light between 35 to 40 percent of turbines that you build. So there would not be 20 turbines with turbine lighting, it'd be somewhere under 10. And that's compared to all the existing structures out there over 200 feet that have lighting, it would blend in.
Commissioner Donenfeld, you had had a question about mounding. Do you want to ask that?
Maybe this could be to the gentleman in charge of environment. So much of the mitigation talks about... It sounds like it's pretty active. From a biological resources standpoint, it sounds pretty active. There are a lot of critters running around that area. And they talk about if you find that they're being endangered, that the way you protect them is you sort of put mounds of dirt around their nesting or wherever they're habitating. And my question is, of course, I don't understand whether there's a downdraft to these turbines or not, but my question was whether the velocity of the wind from coming off of the turbines would affect what's happening on the ground. The fact is, there's never been an eagle killed by a windmill in the Palm Springs area. Some years ago, there was hysteria about eagles, and legitimately so, because some do get killed up north. And one time, I offered a $10,000 reward if anybody could find evidence of an eagle killed by a windmill in the flats, and nobody could take me up on it. The reason is, they live in the, up in the trees, up in the hills. And the botanist explained to me that if you're an eagle, and you can fly laterally and get a rabbit and take it to your nest, or come down here and lift it 4,000 feet, you know, you're gonna stay up in the hills. For whatever reason, they just don't come down here. There was one eagle, killed one time, found on Dillon Road between two wind farms. And it turned out, it hit a power line, its shoulder was almost cut off, wing almost cut off. And that's, a power line does that. There are no above-ground power lines in wind farms. A windmill blade is like getting hit by a bus. It might crush an animal, a bird, but it's not gonna cut its wing off. The migratory birds tend to fly above 1,000 feet. Millions of them come through the San Grignano Pass, two each way, during the year. But there's been very little evidence that they've been killed in any significant numbers. And those were always by the windmills way out to the west by Cabazan. So as you consider these matters, I very much hate to see this go down the road of that we have a giant bird problem here. It'd be nice, bad for these guys, it'd be bad for me next time I show up with a project I want to build. That's kinda why I'm here, is to be sure that we don't get conditions that have been dealt with in the past. So the bird issue is, as you look into the history of studies that we've already done in this planning commission and by staff, you'll find that the bird issue mercifully down here is just not a big one. And then I could be having my geography wrong on lights, but I think citizens of Palm Springs proper have to look through the existing lights on the existing projects that will remain before they can see the lights on this one. I gotta double-check that, but I think that's right. So it may be that these lights, albeit they're a bit higher, may not even be discernible from the city. But that's something you can look at the geography and find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak? The applicant has three minutes for rebuttal, and if you don't have rebuttal, we may have questions from the commission? If you want the rebuttal time? I think there might have been questions for the gentleman who deals with your environmental issues, who was up here before. Does anyone have questions of him? Just...
Were you going to go to a study session for this?
Yes, we are.
I don't want to bring it all up again.
Okay.
And I'm gonna summarize my questions electronically, so you will know what they are in advance, and the other expert that the city is gonna be using.
Okay. Commissioner Hudson?
Yeah, I have a sort of basic question. You're asking for a 499-foot height, let's just say 500. And to me, that's very high. So I was, my question is, did you look at an alternative scheme, keeping, let's just throw a number out there, a turbine height of 300 feet? And in terms, obviously, there would need to be more turbines, but was that a feasible option, or did you explore that at all? Sure, that'd be great.
Is the microphone on? On the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
And I can answer that question, thank you. The nature of the turbine business today is, as turbines get more efficient and they get taller, all the major modern manufacturers of today have followed that path. So there really are no new, modern turbines that are under 300 feet. It's just, they've gone to the 400, 450, 490-foot range, and that's just sort of how it's gone. If we had been able to find turbines under 300 feet, then what happens is, we have more, we have more impacts, more turbines, the same-sized site, and trying to achieve the same capacities, it just, the setback needs, the impacts on the ground, all of those things go against us, go against the site. So it's really, at this point, the modern turbine world is 410 feet and higher. And I'd like to answer the FAA question as well. Typically, I imagine some of the existing turbines out there today have daytime and evening lights flashing. Our turbines, the requirements of the FAA are medium-intensity red lights, and they will only flash at night. And not every turbine will be lit. How the FAA manages the lighting program is, once the final layout for construction has been determined, the FAA will look at it, and they'll issue a lighting plan. And it's typical that they light between 35 to 40 percent of turbines that you build. So there would not be 20 turbines with turbine lighting, it'd be somewhere under 10. And that's compared to all the existing structures out there over 200 feet that have lighting, it would blend in.
Commissioner Donenfeld, you had had a question about mounding. Do you want to ask that?
Maybe this could be to the gentleman in charge of environment. So much of the mitigation talks about, it sounds like it's pretty active, from a biological resources standpoint, it sounds pretty active. There are a lot of critters running around that area. And they talk about, if you find that they're being endangered, that the way you protect them is you sort of put mounds of dirt around their nesting, or wherever they're habitating. And my question is, of course, I don't understand how the, whether there's a downdraft to these turbines or not, but my question was, whether the velocity of the wind from the coming off of the turbines would affect what's happening on the ground and disturb the mitigating issues that might be put into place for serving, saving the biological resources?
I can address that. We've, in Tehachapi and other wind farms throughout the western United States that I've overseen, not just the construction, the disturbance at the time, but also the vegetation, the revegetation monitoring, and the mitigation that we've done on the ground for desert tortoise, burrowing owls, vegetation communities, whatever those may be. Our monitoring has not shown any effect from any wind activity associated with turbines. The sites are typically characterized, because of the nature of the way the wind moves across the landscape, it's laminar, it's flat, it doesn't roll, it doesn't tumble. Those make the best and most productive wind areas, so that's where we put those turbines. So the fact that those turbines are hundreds of feet in the air, it's an unrestricted movement of air below those turbines, and it does not, we have very sensitive reseeded areas that have been sown, they've various methods of planting seeds, and monitoring those for up to five years. We've never had any effect of the actual wind turbines and wind themselves.
It's because of the height, basically.
Yes.
You mentioned something about the nature of the wind that comes through the San Grignano Pass. That's a different kind of wind that you would find other places? You talked about a rolling wind, and a sort of a straight, directed wind?
So we've got meteorologists that study that in minutia, and so I can't speak to the specifics. However, that these areas historically are fantastic for the wind regime that's there, and how the turbines, the selection of those turbines to use that wind resource the most efficient manner possible. Like Rob had mentioned, that's part of the reason these are so tall now, is because that wind resource is so clean at that elevation.
Thank you.
If I could do a rebuttal to Mr. Noble's comments regarding some of the questions that were asked about how we interact with the non-government organizations, like Sierra Club and Defenders of Wildlife. We work very closely, we've got professional working relationships with these, with these organizations. We go to the same industry conferences, we sit on the same panels, we work on the same mitigation strategies, the monitoring strategies, and whatnot. There are three things that come into play for this project, and repowers in general. One is that we want, we've got the ability to use data that's been collected over the last 20 years. So instead of you running a model from new, or what would be determined, more rigorous studies at greenfield sites where there are no projects, we're very fortunate to use the data that's already been collected, to see how these are performing in terms of how they're impacting wildlife resources. So we've collected, and you've got a document in front of you, this is the Bird and Bat Conservation Strategy.
We don't have it.
We've submitted that. The purpose of that is to not only characterize what is out there now, the bird resources, which are in fact very low, it's a very good site, but also characterize the mortality that we're seeing on similar projects like the Dillon and the Mountain View wind sites that are in close proximity to those. And we have those mortality reports, and we go back 20 years to other studies that have been collected. Also, what this document represents is bringing something that these older projects don't have, and that's a sense of paying attention to what's going out there. Current statistical monitoring protocols that are in place, so we're actually monitoring the effects that we've got on those new, which is absent from the landscape right now in a majority of the projects. So this is actually bringing this project up to the standard of care that's expected by the Fish and Wildlife Service, CDFNW, and the organizations, as well as just the industry standard. And you had asked earlier, what are some of the mitigations that have been imposed for unexpected or high mortality rates? In fact, that is repowering projects, just what we're proposing to do. Taking those old machines offline, those windrows that have affected birds, for whatever reason, from the monitoring, and repowering. And that's what happened in the Altamont. We've shown that those repowering efforts, and in this document, those citations are provided, 67 to 97 percent reduction in mortality across all species, which has been rigorously in the literature cited.
Look forward to reading it.
Are there additional questions?
I wish we had had that report.
Yes. Because we have to be out of here by four, and we have one more item.
Remind me what those are, again, the numbers. Yes, the preconstruction.
Those are all preconstruction, they don't apply.
Correct. Now, however, that this is a living document, the Bird and Bat Conservation Strategy, that will operate, as long as those turbines are operating for 30 years, this document will be a living document, and we'll monitor the effects, whether it's burrowing owls, vegetation, what have you.
But what you're saying is, based on your recent studies, given the height of these turbines, very often, very often, you don't have to do any mitigation because nothing's affected at ground level?
Correct. I can say that the, we have 11 projects representing close to 700 turbines in very similar desert arid types in the Tehachapi area. We have monitored those 11 projects three years apiece. That's 33 years in aggregate of formal post-construction mortality monitoring. We have never taken a listed species, and we have never found any large numbers of mortality from any particular event. That is a considerable amount of information that we can use that's published.
Question?
Yes. And it's quite, quite frankly, the arid areas of California show lower mortality numbers. Typically, six birds per megawatt is expected in the western United States. For as long as these surveys have been, this is, this is an aggregate of everything, it's a compilation of the studies, about six. The wind farms in this area that have been studied, it's not six, it's 1.2 to 2.3. So it's substantially less than the national average, and California is about four birds per megawatt. Correct, a lot of them in the Altamont area. And that was before the repowerings.
Thank you.
There's a lot of information out there, and we would love to provide it to you in whatever format that's we can.
Thank you so much. At this point, I'm going to take a motion to continue this. Flynn, do you have a date for the study session and a date for this?
The next Planning Commission meeting will be on January the 23rd.
So doing a study session on January 23rd, so we're going to continue this. The motion would be to continue this until January 23rd. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second? I've got a mo-- fine, can we vote on that? Thank you.
I think Doug won't get a chance to vote on that.
Okay, on to the next and last item. For people here, we have 20 minutes, so I'd like to figure out a way to proceed on this. It's a city issue. If we can have a short staff report with time for questions, so that we don't go into a long staff report, if that's okay with you, Flynn, so that we can leave in time
Madam Chair, if you'd like to go ahead and read the title for the item?
Oh, I'm sorry. That would shorten it, wouldn't it? City of Palm Springs for its own text amendment to sections 91.00.10, 92.1.1, and 93.23.14 of the Palm Springs zoning code related to accessory second units in residential zones. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. As introduced, this is a proposed zoning text amendment to the city's accessory second unit regulations. As you know, accessory second unit is a secondary dwelling unit that provides complete independent living facilities for one or more persons. And the state of California acknowledges that accessory dwelling units, and also accessory second units, offer benefits that address the state's affordable housing shortage issue, and then also provide diversified housing options. And for the reason, state has been requiring the city to conform to the state's accessory dwelling unit law. And the intent of this zone text amendment is to make the city's current zoning regulations to be more consistent with the state regulations. As since the adoption of the current zoning ordinance back in 2015, the state has amended its regulations multiple times. The main thing about the inconsistency that's observed currently is the terminology that is used. The city's zoning regulation calls accessory second dwelling unit versus the state law calls it accessory dwelling unit. So the staff and the Department of Planning Services is proposing to achieve consistency in the language that's used, and then also include additional definitions to provide more clarity to the person who interpreted the code and to the public as well. One of the proposed amendments is to omit the current stipulation about how large an accessory structure can be, and 150-inch lot size requirement will be omitted as part of the amendment. And for the proposed changes to the accessory second unit regulations, this is a table that's included in the staff report, and as you see, we are trying to make it easier for the residents to establish accessory dwelling units. If you look at the bottom of the table, which is maximum accessory second unit rental period, the word maximum actually should be minimum, to be consistent with the city's vacation rental regulations. And one of the major differences is that for the maximum allowable size, currently the zoning code allows 30 percent of the existing living area, or 1,200 square feet. And the land use permit can be applied to increase the floor area up to 99 percent of the primary residence. However, this will be changed to make it maximum 50 percent of the existing living area, or 1,200 square feet, whichever is less, which is required by the state law. The intent of the accessory dwelling unit is to provide affordable and diversified housing options. And as you can imagine, the larger structures are typically more expensive compared to smaller structures, and then also, the housing needs really need to be diversified. And for the reason, staff is recommending the omission of the 99 percent floor area increase via land use permit. And one of the other change, what other changes that's being proposed is the parking requirements. Right now, the required amount of parking space is determined by the number of bedrooms that an accessory second unit contains. However, the staff is recommending these regulations to be changed, to be consistent with the state regulations. So the state regulation states that the provision of one parking space regardless of the number of bedrooms, and if accessory dwelling unit meets certain conditions, they are not, the residents are not required, excuse me, the residents are not required to provide the parking space for the unit. And this is the last part of the table that was included in the staff report, and just to clarify the fire sprinkler requirements, this is actually stated in the state's, the building code section, which is reviewed by the Building Safety Department. And the fire sprinkler is required unless all the specific conditions stated in the building code met. However, according to the most recent state law, the language has been actually introduced as a part of the accessory dwelling unit stipulation, but there will be not much of a difference because the state law now requires that the fire sprinkler is not required if it's not required for the primary residence, but that's actually one of the findings that's currently included in the building code regulation. And the last one, the utility meter requirement, actually, the separate meter is not required from the primary residence, and again, the amendment proposes to include additional language, but it does not really change the content of the requirement of itself. So the staff recommend the planning commission to approve the proposed zone text amendment to the city council, as stated in the draft resolution. And staff is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Questions? And I'm gonna go start with Commissioner Woods and come down.
Thank you for the staff report, and I also want to compliment you on the table that you put in the staff report. I found it very easy to read and digest, and I think anyone in the public would find it as well. So I want to thank you very much for the fantastic table that you've done.
Thank you.
I do have a question on page three of six. I think you, halfway down, it says the maximum accessory second unit rental period, and you said that should be the minimum accessory second unit rental period, is that correct? Is that what it should say?
That is correct.
It should say minimum?
Correct.
And that, that minimum is not a state law, is it?
No, that is to, well, state law says 30 days, but because we do have a vacation rental regulations in the code, which states that 28 days, well, I'm sorry, to just clarify, the vacation rental, based on the zoning code definition, is a single-family dwelling that is utilized for occupancy for a period of 28 days or less.
Correct.
So we are requiring the second, excuse me, accessory second unit rental period to be minimum 28 days, so that it does not become a vacation rental.
So that's a city, not a state? Correct. That is a city requirement. And that came out of the discussions that were had when we last updated the ordinance in 2015. There was a recommendation from the Planning Commission at that time, and that was followed through by the city council, also supporting that language that we have in the ordinance. So that's where that came from. Thank you, no more questions. Thank you very much.
So can I just follow? So the primary residence could be a vacation rental, but the secondary accessory dwelling could not?
No. What the language is, if you'll go to page six of nine, the requirement is there under 4A and 4B. Let's see, I don't know that we have that in the PowerPoint. So under 4B, it says rental of the accessory dwelling unit separates from the primary unit must be for periods of 28 days or more. Such a minimum requirement shall not apply where the entire property is rented or leased to the same person. So again, referring to 4B on page six of nine.
Going to that same point, Flynn, this is going to the intent of state law, that this adds to the rental stock or housing stock, correct?
Exactly, that the purpose of the accessory second dwelling unit regulations is to add to the affordable housing stock.
Yeah, I don't get that, sorry. So the primary residence could be a vacation rental?
Only if you're doing--
Only if you're doing the entire property. The entire property is a vacation rental.
You couldn't separate the, the, the primary one?
No.
But you can lease the secondary as long as it's for a period of 28 days or longer. So it creates an accessory, a smaller accessory unit.
Correct.
Yeah.
That doesn't make sense. But, no, but, Flynn is saying you could rent the entire lot, including the primary and the secondary for less than 28 days?
Yeah, the entire property could be a vacation rental.
Including the accessory dwelling unit?
It, it has to be rented as one.
At the same time?
Exactly.
As a vacation rental?
They cannot be separated.
As a vacation rental?
Correct.
Okay.
But in terms of the primary residence and the accessory second unit, the owner can either live in the primary residence or the owner can live in the accessory second unit and rent out the other, but the rental period has to be greater than 28 days.
Okay, so it could only be a vacation rental if the owner doesn't live on the property?
If it's, correct.
So that was questions on this point. Separate questions?
I have a question. The accessory dwelling unit is defined as a complete independent living facility for one or more persons and it shall include provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. What if I, as a private property owner, wanted to build a casita solely for the use, my own personal use? Would this apply to that situation?
It shouldn't, it shouldn't as long as you're not building a unit that has full cooking and it, it's not a full unit.
But if technically, theoretically, if the casita, which typically doesn't have all of that, but if it did have all of, all of that, where it could be an independent living unit, then it is defined, it's within the definition of an accessory dwelling unit.
Correct.
And would I be given the same kinds of waivers and special benefits that this new law will allow that unit?
If it has full cooking facilities, yes.
It's designed so that you could rent it or you could have your in-law live in it.
But the real purpose of this is to provide alternative ways for people to find homes.
Correct.
To increase the housing market.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions on this ordinance? Just directing it maybe to specific questions so that we can get through it in five minutes. I have one, which is, I understand the change in the maximum allowable size, which was from 30% of the living area to 50%, but why exclude the ability to go to 99% with an LUP?
One of the things that Ms. Kukuchi explained is that the language relative to the 99% was a carryover from our pre-2015 ordinance.
No, it was added specifically at 2015. I remember it was Commissioner Hudson's suggestion and it came into our ordinance that way.
I apologize. Going back to Ms. Kukuchi's explanation, this is really intended to be for affordable housing, to increase the stock of affordable housing. If you have a unit that's 99% of the main dwelling, it's no longer really within the realm of affordability. Let's say the main dwelling is 3,500 square feet, at 99% of that, you, you have an accessory dwelling unit of 33 or 3400.
So you would go through normal zoning for something that was larger, if you put a larger second unit on your property, you would have normal zoning requirements?
You would have normal zoning requirements, yes.
That answers my question. Any other questions on this? Yes.
I'm concerned that people will try to game the system and try to add a second dwelling unit that's actually a vacation rental somehow, maybe by flipping them or some other things. We just want to monitor that in the future to make sure that, I don't think the purpose of this at all is to provide for vacation rentals.
How are you handling that, Flynn?
And the key is through our Vacation Rental Enforcement Program and through our Vacation Rental Enforcement Office, they will be the ones who will be charged with monitoring and enforcing that.
Do you send something to them that tells them that they can't rent this additional unit that way?
We will do a better job of doing that for them as we have the units come through. I think that's really the key is for us to notify them when they come through.
So the only thing is maybe to add something, should we add something that indicates that staff?
No, I don't think that we need to because again, the regulation is very clear. It's just a matter of coordination between our two departments to make sure that they can enforce and understand the need to enforce. This is a public hearing item and you do have members of the public here in the audience.
Ah, oh, I'm so sorry. If there is no, there's, we've had the staff report, all questions of staff have been asked. Members of the public, I've opened the public hearing if you'd like to come forward and ask questions. So sorry, I didn't.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Council. Basically, I only have one request. Could I get an updated copy of what you guys are discussing? Cause I'm, I'm looking at what was on your, posted on your website and I only have pages three of six. And you just discussed, said you have nine pages.
And so we'd be happy to get that to you. Ms. Kukuchi will coordinate with you.
Thank you.
Would you like?
Yep.
If you go, it'll be in, it'll also be on city council agenda fairly soon, won't it?
Yes, we anticipate that this will be going forward to city council. I don't think it's going to be going at the second meeting in January, probably the first meeting in February. It'll go to city council for consideration.
Okay, so this document has not been approved then yet?
No, not yet.
And when will it be approved?
It would go forward to city council, I anticipate at the first meeting in February.
Okay, thank you.
So we have the item in front of us. We had one correction, which was maximum to minimum. I don't know if that's in the ordinance and it needs to be corrected in the, in the actual text.
I, I think that was just in the table itself.
Yes, that is the table. So the information that's included in the draft resolution is correct.
Can I, if, unless there are more questions, can I take a motion to approve?
I'd be happy to make a motion. My motion, no, I'm not done with my motion, but thank you. My motion is to approve it, but to strike the maximum, or excuse me, the minimum rental period, I really don't believe that in any way, building affordable housing, if somebody uses that as a vacation rental, some will, some won't, but we're building the product nonetheless. If the product is, and I just really see no reason to regulate it. When we've, subsequent to 2015, we've gone through a pretty hefty election and at this point, vacation rentals are very well regulated. And I think if a person wants to make an extra income, whether they rent it for 28 days or more, or 28 days or less, that's the economics of the time. So is there a second to my motion?
There being no second, I will take a second motion on this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we call the vote on this? It's fine. You might want to change it to Callardine since Mr. Woods is voting no. That passes with one, one no, six yeses. I think we are almost done. Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments. Commissioner Donenfeld.
No, we're really running out of time because two of our council members are eager to get in here, but I know this is the last session of the planning commission for Lynn and Kathy and I just want to say that you could not work with two better, more informed, more cooperative, more collegial people than Lynn and Kathy. I have served on many boards, public and private, and I've never met a chairman more qualified, more able to run a meeting, to concentrate on the substance and get the process through in an expeditious way than Kathy Wermick. And I congratulate her and I thank her for her service, I thank Lynn for his service. And I can speak for all my fellow commissioners and tell you, you will be sorely missed. We'll think of you many, many times.
Thank you, and I will, I hope I will stay in touch with all of you.
I might even come and testify. Three minutes. That'll be really tough.
Planning Directors Report.
I, I will keep my comments to Lynn and Kathy brief in that we will be planning a luncheon for them and I'll make my comments then.
I know I have a restricted.
We are looking at Monday, the 14th or Wednesday, the 16th. Would either of those days work for the planning commission?
Commissioner Maruzzi, are you back?
Did you say the 14th?
Monday, the 14th or Wednesday, the 16th? Okay. Is everyone else available on the 16th?
What, what time?
Noon.
Kathy has asked that we go to Smoke Tree for lunch. I've talked to Tracy Conrad and she's more than happy to host us, host, host us any day at lunch.
And if we can invite our city council liaison, I don't know that she'll be free, she probably won't, but I think it would be nice if she could attend. And the new commissioners, if they want to.
Okay.
So is it the Wednesday, the 16th?
Mr. Hudson, does that work for you? Okay. So Wednesday, the 16th and we'll send a meeting invite to you all and we will coordinate with Smoke Tree on the arrangements. And that's it. Thank you very much.
And I will adjourn this until study session at 10 o'clock, Flynn?
I believe we can start either at 10:30 or 11:00. I think we'll be okay.
10:30 or 11:00 at Flynn's discretion on Wednesday, January 23rd, 2019.
Are you going to be there? I mean, are you, you're, you're gone, right?
I'm gone.
So what about our chairperson? When does that happen?
Next time.
And do the new members show up next time?
Yes. They're approved tonight.
They'll be sworn, I believe they'll be sworn in at the meeting, won't they?
Regular meeting or the state's?
Sometimes.
Yeah, I did too.